Welcome everyone, nice to see you all. We're gonna get right into it because we have a little longer presentation this evening. Start with the approval of minutes for the regular session from October 2, 2025. Do I have a motion for approval? So move second. Okay, and is there any discussion on this or edits? All in favor of approval? Thank you. Okay. And what's the current report?
Current report shows that we're running comparatively to previous years. And we're in good shape overall, but there are going to be some budget overages and shifts. If you look at line 30150, the administrative support, retirement payout and training. So it's a little bit over. 30150, let me get the correct numbers. So it's a downfall right now of about 18,000. That's because of some administrative support and retirement payout and training of replacements. If you go to 30170, the teacher salaries, there's been quite a bit of teacher salary, multiple lane changes, coursework that they take in over summer and things like that. Reduction in Title I funding that we've had, it actually cut in half this year. So it's looking like overall, if you jump then to the special ed tuition, special education tuition line, which is on page two. No, I'm sorry, it's on page three. That's an overage because of enrollment changes. So it looks like that budget line will compensate for the teacher salaries and all. So all of those transfers will come forward to you next month.
Say that one more time. It's coming from the special ed.
Special ed tuition.
Tuition.
Yeah.
From private, so 300 555.
Private, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
So they'll put those transfers in for next month where you can approve moving forward to change those budget lines. But overall, we're in really good shape. So then we move to rural aid sheet. Although it's in your packet, it's not updated because they just got the funding amount, I think this week. It was just over a hundred thousand dollars. So that sheet is not current because we actually have a new bookkeeper and she hasn't gotten that far yet. So, but she will, they're working on that along with the revolving account. That is also not updated due to changing staff. They're gonna work on that all for next month. There's a follow-up item that you guys asked about correctly because I wasn't here. Something with student activity funding and interest. Was there a question last month regarding that?
Uh, I think it was about the policy.
Oh, about the policy. Well, that's that's coming to you tonight as well. But they wanted you to let, they want to let you know that interest is posted in the student activity account by the town and it gets put on the general ledger report. So that'll be, if it hasn't been recognized in the past, it's only there moving forward. So that's the update in, oh, that's. Um, that's the update in the financial.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Jody, do you, we got a revolving report this time, which we've never seen before.
Yes, yeah.
Was that intentional or not?
It was intentional. And I asked the exact same question today because it was, I was surprised by saying, why is this in there? I think because they just print the reports for the budget and they just didn't remove it. But it's good to have because it's, it holds all the student activity accounts as well that is put in the revolving account. So she said that, I mean typically it's not in there for the bus transportation, but we couldn't take it out because you've already received it. So there's nothing to report on the revolving account except that it's in your packet.
This is because the new bookkeeper.
The new bookkeepers need to update that.
Can you just, I don't know if you can explain this, if you can defer me to someone else.
Yeah.
But the revolving accounts are, they're just pass-through accounts basically that kind of.
Revolving account is like your BED pro years, uh, yeah.
Just going to.
After school enrichment, that's where all those tuition-based programs go. And so what's your question, what the?
So like, why do we have like all the Union 61 stuff on here?
Because of all the programs we have here. So the tuition-based students that come in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So where do we, we don't see money coming into these accounts in this report?
In this report, correct. Um, it's reported to the towns, so it's the town itself.
Is another way of thinking that it's not under our purview as a school committee because it's not part of a budget per state?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, it's placed in there, anyone can have it, but we don't normally put them in there because they're not part of your purview for both of them. I asked the same thing, I'm like, why is this in here? So, but it's not up to date and current because it's because of all the tuition-based programs, after-school programs, summer programs, where preschool programs, anything we're collecting money for.
Also a question, special ed transportation appears to be quite over budget as well. Is that, do you think that's accurate? It's always over budget.
Yeah.
Man, I feel like we, the budget is more this year and it's still way over.
Yes, I can have Kristen or someone report out next time for this question.
Cause I, I'm looking at 300 430, yes. Thought we had enough. Well, I don't know, I don't know, we ever will have enough.
Right.
I know, I thought, I'm, I just surprised it appears to be this short, this early in the year.
But it's encumbered, right?
Yes, it is encumbered.
Yeah, they said today everything was encumbered, at least up to today, so that's why the transfers will come next month.
Okay.
Okay.
But I will look at bus transportation.
Because then we also have, we're spending less on the private tuition.
Right.
And private tuition would require transportation as well and not necessarily, it would not necessarily require.
Okay.
You know, oftentimes, yes, but not always.
We'll pull back on that.
A good question about the teacher salaries. So you had mentioned that it's higher than we expected because some data trainings and whatnot. How do we account for that, like even forward?
The teacher salaries, the teacher hours is a deficit because of lane changes and coursework and.
Oh, so it's not, so, okay.
And the decrease, no.
Understood.
Any other questions? No, did you come back? Um, communications?
Um, there's a couple of things, just to add off the press, actually, November 3rd, we've got a request to enter into negotiations for Unit A. There's a subcommittee already formulated and, oh, sorry. And Dad will contact us, have some conversation with you next month to have dates put in for when you want to meet, you want to meet December, January, March, whatever. Just to know, formally it's been requested that we go through unit negotiations.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
I have something.
Uh, joint meeting is November 18th at 6:00 PM. The, to discuss FY calendar, FY '27 calendar and central office budget. There's also an opportunity, I guess, with the town administrator to talk to you about the Turk. He may be here next month.
She should, yeah, I think she is going to, yes. And I also actually believe that we may be inviting her to stay and talk an executive session, but further on that later.
During the joint meeting or in the future?
Um, December, she'll be here for our December meeting.
Okay.
And then, so.
Okay, moving on to Mrs. Kelly, first goes to Kelly.
So enrollment continues to be stable. Recognitions, Mrs. Quinn's class participated in the tribute to our Revolutionary soldiers at the old burial ground today. It's wonderful. And I want to thank the Burgess PTO and the Girl Scouts for hosting Monster Mash and Truck or Treat last Thursday. It was incredibly well-attended. It was crazy, it was crazy good. It was good, it was good. So thank you to Paige and everybody who worked on that. Curriculum instruction and assessment, as you know, Jody will be presenting the 2025 MCAS reports. Parent teacher conferences will be held Tuesday, the 18th, and Thursday, the 20th. And report cards will be issued on December 12th. Professional development, we had another full day professional development opportunity last Friday where there was a keynote speaker, very energetic and positive, and teachers were allowed to participate in various workshops. Amanda has listed the building usage, you can see that there. We continue to have lots of activity here at Burgess today and night. I do want, do want to just ask, are there any questions on the report? Any questions on the report?
I'm there.
Okay, so can I just propose the donation?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm just looking for approval to accept a very generous donation of a thousand dollars from Josh Roy at Cruise Control Transportation to be utilized by our BAM program.
Oh, okay, I have a motion to approve the donation, accept the donation. All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Do you want to go over dates or anything? There's a lot going on.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And I mean, always, I, you know, the teachers, the team leaders and others do a great job in providing us with information about what's going on in the classrooms, which gives you a really fair sense of what's happening. And there's always a lot happening within the classrooms and our other departments. But yes, lots going on and we will be leading into December, which is probably about two pages long update, so. And we have another coming tomorrow.
I'm really sad she missed out. All right, well, thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Okay, and we want to the.
So what's the annual MCAS report, right? So before you, it has a lot of information, so we'll start small. On the first page, you can see the accountability percentile. To explain that data number of 67% means that Burgess is ranking 67 out of 100%, that's what it is, for non-high school group. It's a category of anyone who tests any school that tests any configuration of grade three through eight. So honestly, the junior high is in that group, you know, which it's considered the non-high school grading. That means that Burgess is substantially making progress towards their targets. And now we'll drill down as to what those targets look like. Accountability is kind of twofold. You have your all-student category and then you have your lowest-performing students, which is typically the bottom 20% in a group. That, they're equally weighted to 50% each. So your lowest-performing student group and your all-student group are equally weighted. So, and it's really hard to say because in order to improve your accountability, you really need to move your lowest-performing group up because they're tagged into groups. They're in that, that targeted group, but they're also in your lowest, in your all-students group. So you get a lot of, then for, you know, a lot of output, I should say, with the lowest-performing students doing well. So if you look at that column, we want our lowest-performing group, we want all groups to be three or four, either meeting the target or exceeding the target. And you can see that lowest-performing group is achieving pretty well. There's some areas of concern, certainly your ELA achievement in general. And, you know, growth, it's indicated that if you have low growth, you have actually low achievements. So that shows that ELA has low growth and low achievement overall. So, but there are a lot of highlights here. When you're seeing threes and fours overall, we're meeting those targets, we're sustaining that year after year, and that's why that category looks pretty well. If you look at the all-students, similarly, I mean, doesn't, you got all twos and threes. It's very encouraging to see that we're either improving or meeting or exceeding check targets. There's no zeros and ones. So overall, Burgess is making substantial progress towards their targets. That's what that page means. Any questions with that? Now we drill down, that's high level. Now we drill down and we actually look at our targets. If you look on the next page, this shows a comparison from the year previous, 2024 to 2025, and it shows you the change. Obviously, we want to see positive changes. We want, and if we see negative changes, we want them certainly less than one. There are certainly some areas where they're more than negative one. For instance, the English language learners for the ELA category, you know, that's negative 3.6. So that's an area of concern. But if you look at the others, you're well around the zero mark, though, you know, one-point range of increase. The white category increased almost one point. So they take its aggregate data for those subgroups. Nothing truly alarming. When we're getting close to like four and five points, we need to worry. But zero and one point, it can go either way depending on student performance for sure. What I would say is most important about this page is the far-right hand corner, where it talks about recovery path and path forward. The DESC is putting a lot of emphasis on how are we performing pre-COVID? And the path forward indicates that we're actually over, we're exceeding 2019, where the recover path, recovery path says that we're actually not even at 219. So, so if you look at ELA, the high needs category is above the, above what they were in 2019. English language subgroup is above what they were in, although it declined, they're still higher than 2019. And then the multi-race Hispanic Latino is above what they were in 2019. So that's what we're looking at on this particular page. If you go to math, again, we get some strong data points here. There's, there are very little negatives, right? So that's good. And our initiatives were in our math curriculum for the last few years, so it's nice to see that data. But if you look at the recovery path, because the scores are closer to 500 overall, it's really hard to get over the 2019 category, that, that data point. So they, the only subgroup that is actually above 2019 is the multi-race Hispanic Latino race category, where they're more, higher than they were in 2019. Science, a lot of great data too. Science, all students achieving very well, five points higher than the last target, which is excellent. And if you look at their path forward or recovery path in comparison to 2019, they're hitting far more categories than even math and ELA. Any questions with that page?
Just a quick comment.
Sure.
I think what you just said about the room for growth being, there's less to work with. I think that's something we should keep in mind when looking at this. Also, this is two different cohorts of kids. The demographics have changed a little bit since 2019, and these are COVID babies that were in COVID and all that means. And they've come up. And so I commend Burgess for all the progress. And it should be, we have path forward several different areas. And so that's excellent. It's also worth noting, I think, that in my view, just myself, I think this is on par with the rest of the Commonwealth. And the initiative that the governor launched like a month or so ago about early literacy reflects that. This is right on par or a little bit ahead of the rest of the Commonwealth. And we're a larger school too, as we discussed before with Holland and others. Our, here's, statistics are tricky things.
Yes. And the metaphors, you can, we call it massaging.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, it is.
But to your point, we want all students to get 500 or higher.
Yep.
Once we get to that 500 mark, which you can see, we're right on the cusp. I mean, in some areas, we're a little low, a little, little up. It's harder to, again, move the needle.
There's less room to move to.
Less move, less room to move. But back to the lowest-performing group, as long as you're focusing on that lowest-performing group, because there's always going to be a lowest-performing group. But it doesn't matter if they're high-performing, lowest, you know, or low. They're all, and as long as you continue to shift the needle from lowest performing, you're going to see some increases. And that's what it's designed to do. That's what, how the accountability is, is what it's designed to do. It's like the strategy behind getting good point, good target numbers. So, yeah. So, but now, if we turn the page, because we love this kind of data. That's high-level data that we've just been talking about. But when we look at grade, the grade level data that you see on the next couple of pages, this is where we figure out certainly which grade levels we need to target, which we do not. And to your point, Mary, about the COVID babies, we're actually finally seeing the shift in grade three. That these grade, these students in grade three have had continuous educational experiences. And you're going to see that in the data before you put grade three. So, and then it varies after that, but we'll look closely at that. So if you look on page three, these sheets, the next couple sheets tell you grade level data from 2024 to 2025, which is what accountability is earmarked on. It compares 2019 to 2025, which is how we know if we're moving forward or recovery path, right? It gives us a cohort group and we compare it to the state and Union 61. There's a lot of data here, okay? So instead of looking at every fine point, I'll talk you through some things. Look at some notable areas and some concerning areas. If we first look at grade level comparison for grade three ELA, you can see that in 2019, it was very high, 2024, low, but we're shifting upward, right? It's not much, but 2% is a lot in Burgess. I mean, it's a, you're dealing with 100 students, right? So then if you look at Burgess from, in grade four, again, high in 2019, trending upward, not much, but still trending upward from 24 to 25. For grade five, again, high in 2019 and trending upward. So we're seeing some good patterns here. Grade six, though, again, some foundational, you know, skills are missing. So high in 2019 and then dipping a little bit in grade six, so from last year to this year. Then we can't, so that is for meeting and exceeding. That's all kids that have gotten 500 or better. We can shift gears then to the not meeting because we want these populations to be declining. We want the left to increase, we want the right to decline. So you can see on grade three that not meeting and exceeding, not meeting expectations has declined. That's a good sign. Same thing in 20, 25 for grade four, declined. And then 24, we're seeing a nice pattern. And grade five declined and then grade six declined. So we want to, we're seeing some good numbers. That's grade level data. And that's apples to oranges. That's, as you say, two different groups of kids, right? So then we can look at a cohort group. The cohort group actually says a lot. So if you, I starred them so that you could see. If you look at grade three, 2024, 56% was the meeting category. It dropped in grade four and 25, okay? Again, we have a group of students who have, and the test gets harder in grade four. So, but we're still seeing some skill deficit. If you, and that's your current grade five students. You can look at your current grade six students by starting at grade four, ELA 2024, and then the carrot to grade five, grade five 2025s. But we see an increase, which is great. Our current grade seven is the dash. 2024 grade five starts at 31% and increases to 42%. So we can see some nice little trends happening. There's some other points of emphasis that we looked at as an administrative group was then the spread between the state and Burgess. And Kathy passed out another paper too.
Exactly.
So if you look at the backside, which is notable, we can compare, this is, she used the same numbers.
And this is just meeting and exceeding.
Yes, so we focused on meeting and exceeding categories. Some areas to note in, on this page, particularly with the state, is look at grade four, ELA, down 23%. So grade four was up 1% in 2024, but down 20, I'm looking at the wrong one. Let's look at the state, sorry, down below. Yes, so.
This is us plus.
Yes, so we're looking at the state comparison. Look at grade four.
This is us, this is just Burgess.
Right, no, I'm on the back.
This is 2024.
You're on the back, okay.
If you're on the back, yeah.
Yep, okay. Grade four, comparison to the state. Grade four was down 23%, but this, and the state was only down 12%. So that's an area of concern.
So our recovery is looking a little bit different. So the 25, our scores comparing 25 to 2019 are down 23%. I do want to make a point.
Our scores were higher in 2019.
Correct, our scores in 2019 were actually very high.
Yes.
They were actually, we, we had headed, we had done a great job with our writing initiatives. And so our scores were very high in 2019. And then we go into COVID and we drop. So our path is going to look different. But we do need to just point out that in 20, when you compare Burgess 25, ELA 25 to 2019, where we have a deficit of 23%. The state is down 12%. So their recovery is a little bit stronger as the states is a little bit stronger than what Burgess is experienced. We'll point out grade three ELA, and I just want to, you know, restate what Jody said. That grade is the first grade that was not impacted. They did not have any interrupted education. So it really does show. Cause even, you know, just, just understanding that. So they are actually up over 2019. So good news is, is when you go back to the front, we're doing great. If you look at the bottom, the summary that I have on the bottom, that is comparing Burgess to Burgess 25 to 20, our current, 25 to 24. That first column where you have it, grade three is up 2%, grade four is up 1%, grade five is up, grade six is down a bit. But we're up in, of the nine assessments, we're up in seven of the nine from last year's scores. So we do want to make sure that we're highlighting that.
So that's ELA, now we can move to math. It's the same comparisons, there's a lot going on on this page. Certainly look at the grade level data. We'll go, start with grade three. Nice jump from 24 to 25, right? And grade four, also a nice jump from 24 to 25. You can see the trend. There's a little dip in grade six, but all the other grades are showing up. Meeting and exceeding categories are trending in a positive direction. Okay? For, we look at cohort group. So your current grade five, start at 2024 grade three, go to 2025 grade four, and it's stable, right? Not much. Then for your current grade five, a little bit of a dip. When you, six percentage points, it's not a lot, but it's still not in the right direction. And then your current grade seven, 38% in 24 to 56% in 25. Good result there. So hopefully, looking at our, you know, current, it would be now our current fourth graders. We're hoping to see some stability happening from third to fourth grade. We have not had stability in a few years because of COVID. So, and hopefully more increases on, on the rise. So, but math scores are very healthy and science scores are even healthier.
Can I ask a question about math? Are we, are you worried at all about grade six math, the lowest performers? That number has sort of jumped from 2024 to 25, from four to 13? Or are you looking at it as a cohort where it was, it was 16 in grade five and now it's 13?
That's look at it as the cohort, yeah.
Yes.
As the cohort.
Yes, so it's important, yeah. Very much, very much. So also in, for the math, we're looking to see if our students are moving out of the not-meeting categories in grade three. We saw that in grade. We saw that, um, in grade four, we saw the decline. Um, grade five, same thing, but grade six, it went up. Again, content gets harder if the foundational skills are lacking, so makes sense. So that's math. Um, so that's achievements for math and ELA. Science achievement, we don't have as many data points because they only take it for one year. Um, but very healthy scores, uh, increasing. Certainly the meeting, the meeting categories while decreasing the not meeting. Um, year-to-year data, even over a three-year trend shows that we're getting closer to two thousand nineteen, which is great. Um, and that's achievement overall for all three. Then we move to growth, um, which again, the premise is to say that when student growth increases, achievement will as well. Um, we got some nice healthy scores here between forty and sixty points. That's like the target, uh, and it's not percentage, it's actually points. Um, there was a low area for grade four, E, L, ELA. Um, that growth is low, but we knew the achievement was low, so makes sense. Um, there's a graph on the next page using the same colors so that you can see the trend. ELA is looking a little stagnant for all the grades in comparison to the state. Um, but math, you can see the trends going to the top right-hand corner, which is where we want to go for achievement. That's my part of it.
I'm just going to highlight some notable areas and then areas, um, for improvement. So just calling out grade three mathematics, um, two thousand twenty-five percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations surpass our two thousand nineteen percentages. So that's really good news. Our grade three was recognized in the Telegram and Gazette as central mass top performer in English Language Arts. So amongst schools like South Borough, Harvard, um, Wachusett and Shrewsbury. So really great work on that level. Um, the percentage of children of students not meeting expectations in English Language Arts and math in grades three through five decreased, as well as in grade five, science, technology and engineering. So a lot to celebrate there. Burgess was identified as making substantial progress toward targets. And Burgess met the target for addressing chronic absenteeism. There are lots of things to celebrate. Um, a lot of our improvement opportunities are things that we do annually with this data anyway. Um, so we do identify all students at all performance levels with particular attention given to students scoring below the five hundred point threshold in lowest performing student group. Because as Jody said, when you're looking for your targets, if your lowest performing can actually impact, it impacts you twice. So it's really important that we focus on those students. Perform item analysis on all assessments and identify areas of strength and weaknesses. Some of that work has begun, especially around the English Language Arts, uh, writing component. Unparking, unpacking low-scoring standards and work on vertical alignment, which we'll be doing as an activity in January. But we already have that information and we know what standards we, we were low on. We're going to collaborate with grade four and six teams to improve the English Language Arts scores. Um, analysis, analyze written response and provide opportunities for students to, to write across the curriculum. That's work has started, the, the analysis has, the, um, the opportunities are always there for writing, but we're going to make a, a concerted effort, because I do believe our two thousand nineteen scores were reflective of having a concerted effort on writing. We're going to provide stu, support to students demonstrating need based on multiple measures. We don't just look at MCAS, we look at all of our benchmark assessments. We're going to continue to improve our student support team to assist teachers in the identification of students requiring, um, support. We're going to monitor our multi-tiered system of support. We're going to continue to provide students with multiple opportunities to develop technological still, skills. And we're going to continue to identify students in danger of being chronically absent and making sure we're communicating and partnering with families to make sure their children are in school.
I have a question about, when you mentioned the written portion of it, are there any ways to tease out that score from the ELA?
Well, not to actually take it out entirely, you know, but we do, we get the standards here and then I have, I hope I have them. I can do it by classroom and then I highlight those items and see how we scored on them. And then we'll work with our teams to, to, to identify it. But we can't factor it out, because
Right.
as I'm sure you're aware, Whitney, there's a lot of questions about the scoring of it.
Yeah.
Um, so we're, we'll be working on that. We do have the writing samples, we've heard those. The teachers at the grade levels have their current students and their past students, so they're able to look at them. And, you know, we're able to work from there. But we can't like negate it from the score.
Okay. And is there a change in curriculum between pre-COVID and post-COVID, or was it the same?
It's the same.
It's the same.
And reading.
Well, we added reading side by side, so really, no.
Okay.
But I guess, you know, you remembering, you know, lots of you have children that were impacted by it, that many of them left and, you know, some of them left in March of kindergarten, you know, and as hard as we tried, the following year was still a, 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 not what, not what we would have wanted it to have been. So, so again, we're, we're still recovering.
But to your point, we do get early release MCAS scores that do not have the writing aspect, um.
Okay, that's true.
And we do get, if you want to tease that out, and I did raw scores, it's not necessarily scaled scores. And I do have a report, I shared it with you.
I've, I've got one, I have one here too.
Um, to really show what the difference is after the written scores get put in. And there's always a decline.
Yeah.
But in past years, that decline had been like ten points. Now it's probably like five or six.
Okay.
So kids either are getting better with writing.
Right.
Or the, the rubric is changing, you know, the grading is changing. So there's a lot of emphasis on grading of written responses with kids and, and reflecting on what makes this a two versus a three, what makes this a three versus a four. Teachers do a wonderful job with that.
Exactly.
But again, until it becomes, you know, internalized with the students who really, that this, oh, I'm going to put this period in a third grader. And then they're typing as well, so put the type, or the, put the period in and the capital. If it's a third grader, let's just be honest, there's not a lot of exposure to the typing skills. So there's a lot of variables going on. Yeah.
So I can actually shed my light on it, and it is something we probably should look at, um, in a different way. When I look at the raw scores, early release raw scores that we received over the summer without the written response, and I compare, this is grade four. I compare grade four's raw score without the written response to their score, the two thousand twenty-five. It's a seven and a half point differential.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
But prior to that, we were talking double digits, no doubt.
Yes, yeah.
So we are making improvements, I suppose, maybe. Um, and, but we do at least look at the early release. We try to calibrate whether or not the written responses are, how badly they're hurting us or how good they're helping, you know, they're improving, right? So we are seeing improvement, which is good.
Thank you.
And I will say, um, we are doing a grade one, uh, writing program where Hagerty Writing Program for the first time this year.
Okay.
Um, we're hoping to broaden that in the future to be, but we haven't decided whether or not we're going to follow the grade, grade one, grade two, or are we going to start kindergarten? We need to have those discussions as the year goes on and we get some feedback. Um, but it, the teachers really like the program, because it really is good foundational skills for just writing in general, writing sentences and getting them confident with writing, uh, the little ones. Because let's just say, you know, that's where it starts. It starts with confidence, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, questions, like that? Move on to public access. No? Closed public access.
Um, some community reports, uh, roll commission, maybe? Yes. So there have been, um, on to prep for chapter seventy, listening sessions and discussions, um, at the State House. There'll be, there was a listening session today in Greenfield. Apologies for not letting anyone know in case you wanted to go to Greenfield. Um, there's going to be one on Tuesday, November eighteenth. I think we've discussed this before, it is during our joint meeting.
Yeah.
Um, it's going to be running from four to seven P M. So it's virtual. So if that's something you'd like to do, I'm happy to pass along talking points or suggestions about how to phrase written comments. Uh, and there will be one in person Wednesday, November nineteenth, four thirty to six thirty P M in Lakeville. So they're clearly trying to go across the state and virtually. Um, the idea behind these listening sessions is to try and raise awareness about the budgetary constraints that have made, in their view, a change to chapter seventy funding, particularly necessary for rural districts. Um, now this is, this started before some of the federal cuts came in. And now it, the idea is that this is even more needed, because Title One has been cut or other things have been cut. Um, but this is, you know, whatever you feel as an individual, um, you'd like to say or not say. So that's happening. Otherwise, um, if you are attending the, um, the sessions in, on the Cape, um, they will, I think we've mentioned that before, MASC will be hosting a session just for rural stuff, uh, I believe it's on the fourteenth. Um, I will not be able to attend, but I'm happy to connect anyone who'd like to go with, um, the folks who will be leading those discussions. That's what I have.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Mary, or anything? No?
Um, negotiations, Jody already mentioned, we received a request to go into negotiations, so more to come on. Dates for that, um, building a physical plan. There's been no updates, but the T A will be joining us hopefully next month to give us an update on the, I believe, the feasibility study for the TIRF. Coming soon or not coming soon, or all of the good things. Um, and then Whitney, can the task go out?
I was not able to go to the last meeting, but I do know they've talked about MCAS at that meeting as well.
Okay.
So I can get some updates for you guys next time.
Okay. And any unfinished business, anyone have any? Moving on, go to new business. Um, we have policy JJF, the Student Activities Accounts.
Yes, this is written correctly with the, um, balance, factual balance amount of fifteen thousand.
And then GCF. Mm-hmm.
Um, so now you have to write one in front of you instead.
Yes.
You have actually Burgess in front of you.
I think that's right. Did you only get this one paper?
Yes, because the other one was in your presentation.
Yeah. Right, so, sorry, for the Student Activity Account one, it says fifteen thousand, but then it's written as ten thousand.
Oh, worse if you can just say it, yep.
So are we leaving it at fifteen?
Fifteen.
So. And then Jody, so you said the interest was maintained and distributed annually. Okay, so number two is correct, right?
Yes.
Based on what you said.
Yes, and maintain student activity, yeah.
Yes.
Should I say among? Did you put the? I put the among.
Okay.
That part wasn't there.
But should I, I think so.
I'm going to read it out loud.
Go ahead.
And then you guys tell me if it sounds right or not. The interest earned on such accounts shall be maintained in the agency account and distributed annually amount. It should be among, right? The Student Activity Checking Accounts?
Yes. Yeah. But the amount distributed annually to.
And distributed.
The amount distributed. Among the Student Activity Checkings.
It should be among, right?
Among.
Among.
Yes.
I've read it many times.
Yes.
You got it.
So.
Bye.
Number two. No, those were the only two things I have. Okay. So we haven't made a motion or anything. I'm sorry, Trey, that's okay. Um, but for GCF, we're just reviewing that, so.
Yes, so I mean, what was in your packet initially was the wrong edited one, but I passed out the words.
So I'm not being sure.
It was the wrong one.
Right, but you need a motion for anything on that, okay?
No, just so that you know.
So you just, you just need a motion on JJF.
JJF, yeah.
Okay, because this was the original.
Correct.
Okay. Edited, incorporated twice.
Right. Sure, yes.
Just playing my.
That's okay.
I'm just trying to refresh my memory.
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve policy JJF as amended? I mean, as amended here with the two S's.
With the two S's. Yeah.
Someone, second, all in favor? Thank you. Okay. And then we reviewed GCF.
And we agree that this is the correct one that needs to go in the House. But starting with, starting with the paragraph, it is the responsibility of the fifth, right?
But you don't need a motion on it?
No.
Okay. Viewed on September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Is that, second, second? All in favor? Thank you. I'm here, sorry, I'll be down here.